Everyone, please stand for the flag salute.
But we can get into the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, which is stationed in one nation underground and invisible, where the great leaders of the South East are.
One second before your draw.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. The time is now 7:10. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in November 21st, 2024, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Store Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci's absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petraco?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Tucci. He's absent excuse this evening.
We have no minutes, no executive session minutes. Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several this evening. I'm going to go through the list, and then we can vote on the, in the end. The Nutley Belville Columbus Day Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold raffles on Sunday, March 23rd, 2025, at 44 Park Avenue. The township also has received the three, three event applications as follows. Nutley Irish Alliance, 46th, uh, 46th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade for Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM on Franklin Avenue. Van Riper House is having a lawn party fundraiser on Saturday, 26th, 2025, with a rain date of Saturday, May 3rd, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM at 491 River Road. The Rotary Club of Nutley is hosting a car show on Sunday, September 21st, 2025, from 9:30 AM to 6:30 PM with a rain date of Sunday, October 5th, 2025, and that will be located down Franklin Avenue between Chestnut Street and Center Street. The township has also received seven applications for social affair and extension of premises as follows. Nutley Elks Retirement Dinner Dance, Saturday, March 22nd, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 11:30. Location is 242 Chestnut Street. Nutley Irish American is celebrating their St. Patrick's Day Parade celebration on Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM at 44 Park Avenue. Last Call Nutley Hudson Rose has requested an extension of premises for St. Patrick's Day celebration for Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and their location is 238 Franklin Avenue. Friends of Phoenix Center is hosting Casino Night fundraiser on Friday, May 2nd, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 16 Month Senior Owens Place. The Nutley Family Service Bureau is also hosting Casino Night fundraiser on Thursday, March 13th, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 44 Park Avenue. Luna Wood Fire Tavern has requests, requested an extension of premises for their St. Patrick's Day celebration for Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM at 233 Franklin Avenue. And the last one is the Van Riper House is having their Fourth Annual Lawn Party fundraiser on Saturday, April 26th, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM at 491 River Road. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Scarpelli?
I have various reports, October through December, Mayor.
Thank you, and I see that Commissioner Tucci has, submitted his shade tree report for the month of January 2025. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have the bill list for February 4th, 2025. Public Affairs, $117,373.30. Revenue and Finance, $7,850,501.63. Public Safety, $101,179.30. Public Works, $43,207.41. Parks and Public Property, $1,021,114.92. Water Utility, $115,807.75. Payroll as of for January 17th, 2025. Regular payroll total, $984,47.22. Overtime payroll total, $52,780.2. Total payroll, $1,036,827.24. Payroll for January 31st, 2025. Overtime payroll total, $93,218.18. Total payroll, $1,186,330.9. For a grant total of $11,472,341.64.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petraco?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
At this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. If you wish to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move into Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
I don't have particularly an announcement for anything, but, you know, it's been on my mind, and I'm sure you would raise it, the airplane helicopter crash that occurred in Washington. You think about, you know, all of the war stuff going on in Ukraine, the number of people that lost their lives there, Gaza, the people that lost their lives there, the things that are going on around us. I just, we could collect all that together and maybe have a moment of silence for all of that. I also want to include Rose Coco, who, almost 100 years old, she passed away yesterday evening.
Sorry.
So, so just all of that was on my mind, and so if we can do that as a board mayor, if you want to do that when you speak, that's fine with me, but I think something we should do.
We can do that right now. Let's have a moment of silence for all of those who lost their lives in the deadly plane crashes over the course of the last week, and for Rose Coco. Did you have anything else, Commissioner?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Mayor, we have the electronics recycling this Saturday, February 8th, from 9 to 1, entering from Park Lot 9, next to Chickalines, into Park Lot 7. So everybody that's buying their big screen TV for the Super Bowl, and they want to get rid of their old TV, they can bring it on Saturday. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Petraco?
I just want to clear, did you say you're buying us TV?
I didn't say anything about buying.
I just wanted to make sure. Just disposal.
Disposal.
So, on a little heavier note, we have noticed through the Nutley Police Department a little tick up with these break-ins again, and car burglaries. I saw a very disturbing video this morning from a dear friend of mine's house, that is how brazen they are with lights, security lights going on as they're trying to pry open the doors with them on. So this be on alert. I've been saying it to all my friends. I happen to have three dogs at home. Seems like the trend is if you have a dog that barks, they go onto another, another house, so maybe saving a dog from a shelter would be a good thing. The bail reform is still the problem. I like to say that Governor Murphy, although I don't think he has done enough with the bail reform, because we keep locking these mostly juveniles up, because of course the adults send them to all our towns, surrounding towns in our town including, and you know, it seems like in the afternoon they're out of jail, but he has made some steps forward with a little harsher crimes. But until there's a punishment for the crime, we're going to see this. So our police department is doing everything they can to prevent it, but I ask the residents to help themselves. Don't leave your car running, warming it up in this weather. I can't tell you how many cars got stolen doing that, and even your keys, if you could not put them in the kitchen, where most of us all put our keys in the kitchen, and you could maybe put them somewhere in the house, you know, this way they'll get deterred from Nutley. But I just want to give our Nutley Police Department a shout out, because last night, we did apprehend one of the three suspects. Of course, it was a juvenile, not much we could do, but the guys are on it. It's a full-time job for them. It is discouraging when most of the police officers, they pass their time to finish all the reports, and the criminal is out before their shift is over. So if anybody wants to write to our legislators, it's something that really needs to be done, because it's getting old in this town and all towns. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I have one announcement on for this evening. February is Heart Health Month, and in honor of Heart Health Month, this Saturday, February 8th, we will be doing our annual stretching and yoga at the Health Department, followed by a brisk walk through our parks, and then in the afternoon, the Jersey Axe House on East Center Street is hosting us, and we're going to have a two-hour axe-throwing session. So anyone who wants to come out, no registration required, show up to either event, either Saturday at 9:00 AM or axe-throwing at 2:00 PM, and come out, get that heart, heart rate up and pumping, and do something good for your heart. Pay that, pay that, the rent to live in your own body. We're going to go a little bit out of order this evening. The first resolution that I'm going to read this evening is in honor of the Four Chaplains Day. For those of you who don't know, Four Chaplains Day is commemorated to honor four chaplains of diverse faith, who on their way to Europe, when it was their transport ship was struck by a German U-boat, and immediately panic set in, and these four chaplains, though they came from different backgrounds, were united together and created a calming presence on the, the sinking ship, and it led to many lives being saved, and it came to the point where they actually took off their life jackets to give it to soldiers. And so, the United States recognizes the diversity of the faith that was a calming presence on that day, and we have several pastors and rabbis here in honor of Four Chaplains Day, and I think they were all say a prayer this evening. But I wanted to read the resolution first. Whereas on February 3rd, 1943, at 12:55 AM, German submarine U-223 torpedoed the Dorchester off the coast of Newfoundland. This blow knocked out the ship's electrical system. As darkness set in, so did panic, as many men were trapped below decks. In the midst of the chaos, four chaplains worked together to try and still calm and also help as many men as they could. This cooperation was deemed extraordinary at the time due to the four being from such different backgrounds and beliefs. Whereas the men who came to be known as the Four Chaplains were Methodist Minister, the Reverend George L. Fox, Reform Church in America Minister, Reverend Clark V. Polling, Reform Rabbi Alexander D. Good, PhD, and Roman Catholic priest, Father John P. Washington, whose, whose parish was actually right here in Carney, New Jersey. The four men had met while attending chaplain school at Harvard in preparation for each of their appointments as chaplains. And whereas the, there are numerous eyewitness accounts of the Four Chaplains heroism, when the supply of life jackets ran out before each man had one, the chaplains removed their own life jackets and gave them to others. The chaplains also helped as many as they could get into lifeboats. Whereas in 1988, Congress established February 3rd as the annual Four Chaplains Day, not only for the remarkable heroism of these four chaplains, but for the example of unity through diversity for the greater good. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey recognizes and celebrates February 3rd, 2025, as the 35th Annual Observation of Four Chaplains Day. So moved.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petraco?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi, and we have here with us this evening representatives of the various faiths, and I'd like to first call up Elise Worschowski, on behalf of Reverend Katz at Temple, Narama Natimit.
Hi, thank you. I'm a resident here in Nutley, and I'm here on behalf of Rabbi Mark Katz. He gave me a few words to read. Thank you so much, Daniel Jacoby and Mayor Kelly, for passing this resolution. In addition to the bravery of these four chaplains, I am inspired by their partnership. In this climate, it's too easy for religious groups to feel and function like an island, but that can't be further from the truth. There's a rabbinic folk tale about a group of people in a boat, and once they get into deep water, a person begins boring a hole in their boat. Everyone tells him to stop, but he rebuffs them, saying, "I'm only making a hole under my own seat." As the story progresses, it becomes the obligation of the rest of the boat's inhabitants to prove to him that even so, a hole anywhere in the boat will cause everyone to sink. Each group in our country has our own problems, concerns, and fears, but we sink or float on the merit of each of us, and if one of us takes on water, we all do. This resolution shows what it means for the town of Nutley to get that each of our fates are tied together. We may worship different gods and practice our fates differently, but fundamentally, we rely on one another for the bond of mutuality. We stand in the footsteps of those brave chaplains, in whose memory we together join hands to change the world for better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Father Asia Colson from Grace Church.
Good evening. I just have a prayer I'd like to offer from our book in the Episcopal Church, Holy Women, Holy Men, Celebrating the Saints. February 3rd is the day we honor these men in our church calendar as well. If you would pray with me. Holy God, you inspire the Dorchester chaplains to be models of steadfast sacrificial love in a tragic and terrifying time. Help us to follow their example, that their courageous ministry may inspire chaplains and all who serve to recognize your presence in the midst of peril through our Savior, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And from the Episcopal Diocese, I'd like to call up Reverend Audrey Hasselbrook.
I will keep it simple and simply say, may it be so.
Thank you, and, you know, now more than ever, there's everyone with differing viewpoints, you know, but only together and through unity will we become stronger and become not only a better community, better town, better state. And so there's, there's a lot to be said about unity despite our differences, and, and these four chaplains definitely embodied that. And so I want to thank the fellow members of the clergy who came and to support this resolution and honor these, these four individuals for their heroism in the face of extreme adversity. So, thank you. I'd also like to jump ahead to, we have a, a liquor license transfer, whereas an application has been filed for a person-to-person place-to-place transfer of plenary retail consumption license number 0716-33-015-004, here to four issued to J. Izzy 1081 LLC for an inactive license with a mailing address of 21 Campbell Avenue, Belleville, New Jersey, 07109. And whereas the submitted application form is complete in all respects, the transfer fees have been paid, and the license has been properly renewed for the current license term. Whereas the applicant is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by Title 33 of the New Jersey statutes, regulations promulgated that are under, as well as pertinent local ordinances and conditions consistent with Title 33. Whereas the applicant has disclosed, the issuing authority reviewed all the source of all funds used to purchase of the license and the license business, and all additional financing obtained in connection with the license business. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, does hereby approve effective February 4th, 2025, the transfer after said plenary retail consumption license to Arom, A, A D E Cafe 2024 LLC from Pocket Status to the premises located at 227 Franklin Avenue, New Jersey, 07110, and does hereby direct the municipal clerk to endorse the license certificate to the new ownership and new location as follows. This license subject to all terms and conditions is hereby transferred to Aroma D Cafe LLC at location 227 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, effective February 4th, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petraco?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi. And we do have a need to jump into executive session briefly before we continue the rest of the meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Bruno?
Yes, Mayor, to discuss contract negotiations.
I entertain a motion to go into executive.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of public meeting from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley move in to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and, and as such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exceptions provided for, provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petraco?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
All right, we're back on the record. It's eight twelve. Sorry for the delay, everyone. We're moving into ordinances and I'll read ordinance number thirty five seventy eight. This is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. And this is an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, governing residential and non-residential developments. And this is to amend the section two eighty five of our town code. It's and it's going to be amended as written. This is about nine pages. It will be in the publication. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertising that we send together with notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on March fourth, twenty twenty five. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. And we are going to table ordinance number three five seven seven this evening. We have no ordinances on for a second reading, so moving to resolutions, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, then in accordance with the provisions of RS forty eight colon four dash fifty eight, following transfers of appropriations in the twenty four budget, being in the same are hereby authorized and approved from unemployment compensation O and E two hundred fourteen thousand dollars to economic redevelopment O and E two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Essex, State of New Jersey. The Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges for five thousand nineteen dollars and thirty five cents for the lots and blocks listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is a change order for the firm of Inglisino and Taylor. Whereas more fully addressed in resolution two hundred and sixty four twenty three, the township has entered into a professional service agreement with Inglisino Webster, excuse me, Inglisino, now Inglisino Taylor LLC as counsel for the township regarding affordable housing requirements, whereas change order one is needed in an amount of fifteen thousand dollars to continue these legal services for the remainder of twenty four, whereas the funds are available in the COA trust account T twenty six nine oh nine nine oh two, and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars has been certified by the chief financial officer. Set certification being attached to this resolution and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. The change order number one is hereby authorized and approved in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars paid for the result that this that a copy of this resolution shall be placed unfollowed with the clerk of the township of Nutley and a notice in accordance with local public contract law of New Jersey in the form attached here too shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is for a similar change order for Inglisino Taylor. This is an amount of fifty three thousand dollars, and this relates to compliance procedure and general issues primarily related to affordable housing, excuse me, COA, Oprah requests, I'm sorry. The change order is for minus fifty three thousand dollars. The funds are available in account four oh one, one oh, excuse me, zero one two two oh five and has been certified by the chief financial officer and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. The change order number one is hereby authorized and approved and the amount of fifty three thousand dollars paid for the result. A copy of this resolution be placed unfollowed with the clerk of the township and a notice in accordance with the public contract law of New Jersey and the form attached here shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas PB Nutcliffe master pursued a first appeal against the Township of Nutley before the county, Essex County Board of Construction, Board of Appeals alleging that certain invoices were improperly charged against the PB Nutcliffe escrow accounts, which by order of the board adopted on March twenty second, twenty twenty two resulted in the board affirming PB Nutcliffe's appeal in the amount of one hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and thirty one cents. On November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, PB Nutcliffe pursued a separate and second appeal against the township before the board alleging that invoices were improperly charged against PB's escrow accounts totaling fifty two thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty one cents in addition to those that were part of the first appeal. The township accepted the decision of the board in favor of Nutcliffe in the first appeal less a disputed sum of sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty five dollars and fifteen cents, and has acknowledged the second appeal. Whereas the township and PB Nutcliffe have engaged in settlement discussions regarding the first appeal and the second appeal, which discussions have resulted in a stipulation resolving the difference between them and providing for a total escrow refund for both the first and second appeal in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars and ninety seven cents. Whereas pursuant to the stipulation, township has agreed to one, terminate the escrow agreements for phase two B, and three, enclose the current escrow accounts for PB Nutcliffe relating to phase two A, phase two B, and phase three. Two is issue vouchers to PB Nutcliffe refunding the sums which are subject to the first appeal less the disputed sum and the second appeal in the total amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars and ninety seven. in the total amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars and ninety seven cents to PB Nutcliffe, which payment shall be issued from account four oh one, two, two, six, two oh five, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex. The mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to execute and attest respectively a stipulation with PB Nutcliffe Master pursuant to the aforementioned conditions in a form acceptable to the township attorney and be it further resolved that the chief financial officer is hereby authorized to issue refunds as set forth here and above. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly, I'm sorry.
All I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli, would you mind doing yours and Commissioner Tucci's?
No problem, Mayor. Whereas Department of Parks Public Property, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. That treasurer is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs. The amounts listed below seventy, Kenzo Avenue, Rise and Shine Program, one hundred and sixty dollars for the year twenty twenty five, and move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas the township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services in a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions, Benja S A nineteen, colon, forty four, eight dash twenty point five. And whereas the township of Nutley through the Department of Parks and Recreation has a need to acquire specialized professional services, one Kennedy Drives conceptual design through construction administration for the public open space fronting Chestnut Street. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is twelve months from August second, twenty twenty four through August first, twenty twenty five. Whereas DMR Architects, seven, seven, seven Terrace Avenue, Hasbro Heights, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating that we provide such services for the sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And whereas DMR Architects has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit DMR Architects from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available from account five oh one, five oh two, two nine nine, amount of ten thousand dollars that have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey enter into contact with DMR Architects as described in it herein and be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that a notice of this action, if we put it once in Nutley Sun in accordance with the local public contracts law, I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That was Commissioner Tucci's. This is my one resolution. Whereas the mandatory source separation recycling act, public law nineteen eighty seven, chapter one oh two, has established recycling from for which tons grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local source separation and recycling programs. And whereas it is the intent in the spirit of the mandatory source separation recycling act to use tons grant to develop new municipal recycling programs and to continue and to expand existing programs. And whereas such a resolution should designate the individual authorized to ensure that the application is properly completed and timely filed. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey hereby endorses the submission of the twenty twenty four municipal recycling tonnage grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and designate South Forar Recycling Quarter Township of Nutley to ensure the application is properly filed and move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. In addition to the two I already read, I have two on for this evening, resolution number thirty nine, twenty five. Whereas license applications have been received but from the following organizations, Nutley Rotary Club, On Premise Tricky Tray, Saturday, April fifth, twenty twenty five, Nutley Rotary Club, On Premise Fifty Fifty Cash Raffle, Saturday, April fifth, twenty twenty five, Nutley Irish American Alliance, On Premise Fifty Fifty Cash Raffle, Sunday, March first, twenty twenty five, Nutley Belveld Columbus Day Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee Incorporated On Premise Merchandise Raffle, Sunday, March twenty third, twenty twenty five, Nutley Belveld Columbus Day and Italian American Parade Committee Incorporated On Premise Fifty Fifty Cash Raffle, Sunday, March twenty third, twenty twenty five, John H Walker Middle School PTO On Premise Fifty Fifty Cash Raffle, Saturday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. The second one I have on for this evening is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, authorizing a change order for the professional services contract of Inglesino Taylor LLC as counsel for the Township of Nutley concerning special development council. This change order is to in the amount to one hundred and ten thousand dollars to continue these special development legal services for the remainder of twenty twenty four. The funds are available from account number four dash zero, one dash two, two, six dash two oh five, in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, has been certified by the chief financial officer. Said for certification be attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. That change order number two is hereby authorized and approved in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Be further resolved that the copy of this resolution shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley in accordance in accordance to the local public contracts law of New Jersey in the form attached here too shall be published in the Nutley Sun. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. I think that's all the resolutions we have for this evening. At this time, the meeting will be open to the public. If you have any concerns that you wish to address to the Board of Commissioners, please address it to me, and I will address it to the appropriate commissioner. Just if you have a concern at this time, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please. People over there.
It's the first time doing this, Lori Mulready. And my concern, one of my concerns is the the raising of the price of the parking meters. Now, it may not seem so important, but if a little bit helps, I'm on a fixed income and, you know, anyway. It was a quarter for thirty minutes. Now it's a quarter for fifteen minutes. And if you want us to visit the local businesses, you know, give them our business. You don't, don't, you know, nickel and dime us with these, these machines, you know. I gotta pay to go into the store and buy this product. Now I gotta pay even more just to park there to go into said store. So if you want to keep your businesses, you want us to patronize those businesses. You know, go back, reduce those parking meters again. It's a quarter for fifteen minutes. I mean, how long do you, you know, you take longer than that to shop. I do my laundry. I'm longer than fifteen minutes doing my laundry. So what does that mean? I gotta pay more for the parking meter or walk with my laundry? What? I mean, I don't know why it was changed. I mean.
Do you have a specific zone or street, or is it just all over that you're concerned about?
Well, I mean, you know, patronizing any of these businesses, you know, you don't want to pay more money just to go walk into the store than buy stuff in the store. More money, you know, I mean, what, why fifteen minutes for a quarter? It doesn't sound like a lot to you, but it adds up and we just.
We're very, we're very sensitive to that, to your concern, and we're always looking to promote business. But we at at twenty five cents for a half hour when compared to the other municipalities in this area, we're very low. We're even low with where we are in comparison to Montclair, Rutherford, Bluefield, Belleville. So it's not that we're out of the ballpark with raising that fee.
Yeah, but how much, how long do you take to go into? You take longer than fifteen minutes. You don't want to get a ticket. You're trying to do the right thing. You know, what's gonna happen is people are gonna say, I don't care, and they're not gonna put anything in the meter. Then you go lose money that way because I've seen people walk away. They didn't put anything in it. I see them. You know, I observe, I know. So what are you, what are you gaining, really? You know, I mean, just please lower it back.
We'll, we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
And another, my other concern was, I understand that the Chicolini Brothers, the building is gone, or you're gonna put some high rise there. Is that, is that true?
We're currently still in negotiations on that. Mr. Bruno, did you want to?
There has been a proposal and the agreement is for a mixed use type of project, but it's not by one, it's just.
Good, because I think that this is a big mistake. This is Nutley. This is not some city with high rises. I don't know. I think some of you here have been living here since the seventies. I came here in sixty eight. I've seen it. So I know the mom and pop stores. I remember all that. The quaint Nutley was wonderful. Now it's like condos everywhere and now a high rise, more traffic you're gonna get with that. You're gonna have more, and you can't even fill up some of the business stores now. How are you gonna get new stores in here? You can't even fill some of these empty spaces now. But it's the traffic and the more, more people and don't you remember the seventies in Nutley? I, I do. Remember Drews? You remember Gantners? You remember all that's nice?
Did you, just for the record, did you specifically point to Commissioner Evans about the seventies?
I just passed my seventieth birthday, so.
Oh, well.
Yes, I remember walking into Gantner's, being in Drews.
Yeah.
What, what was that, Commissioner Gantner's store?
The hardware store.
I would tell you, but you have not being all as old as I am, you probably wouldn't appreciate it.
Well, I don't know who's living back then when I did. It was a nice, quaint place to live. And now it's, it's so built up. You used to have all these restrictions. You used to keep it as a home level, you know? It's, it's, I know, I'm going back to the past and I shouldn't, right? But I, I don't care. I just.
We certainly appreciate your concerns, and I can, I can speak for the entire board, is that we're concerned with the character of Nutley, and we want to make sure that we preserve that character going forward with whatever is gonna be put there. And to, a lot of your concerns are our concerns as well, and so that's something that.
It's, it's bad now getting through town. I mean, Nutley's still better than all the other towns. I always say that. But it's getting to a point now that it's starting to, it's really bad. I mean, it's really bad. The traffic and some people coming through here, unsavory people, you know, just. You know, I worry about crime and the traffic and the cost of the parking now, you know, it's. I'm on a fixed income, you know, I'm retired now, so I, you know, I gotta, every little bit helps, you know, it's safe. So please consider this, will you? I mean, I keep checking the meters, you know, it's like I'm hoping, you know, in a month from now that it's changed back. Reduced. Please keep that in mind.
Thank you, and.
And the character of this town. No high rises. Come on. Remember the seventies. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. Anyone else wishing to be heard this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Bruno, I think we have a need for another executive session.
Mayor, we do, to discuss litigation.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed executive session.
Move second.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty one, public law nineteen seventy five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss litigation. Be it further resolved that at a time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye, and we have no more business this evening. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M. I'll second that.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
The time is now eight thirty two.